We're going to be running the outside board meeting and the town commissioner's board meeting. I'm on that too. So this is something number, uh... We'll try to try to sit. I'll call this meeting in order of the board meeting.
Art.
Your call.
Art McLaren.
Here.
Larry Watson.
Yes.
Billy Cloud.
Here.
I'll call this over to the chairman of the outside board. Your call.
Joe Clement.
Here.
Jerry Terrell.
Here.
Okay, I'll make a three pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number four recognized gift, I'm going to thank all of our gifts for being here. Item number five, no business, still you got any business there?
No.
Polly? Sheriff, if you got anybody to talk today, thanks. Under Sheriff?
No.
I don't guess I've been losing. No business for the commissioner.
The outside board, uh, number four, I don't know if they leave any business for them. Commissioner? I'll leave that open, uh, for the town big and case some of the guys come up.
All right, moving on to item number six. Commissioner, proceed, three p.m.
Make a motion to approve. I'll second it.
Art McLaren.
Yes.
Larry Watson.
Yes.
Billy Cloud.
Yes.
Item number seven, proof blank P.O., what we have simple. One to O'Reilly, two hundred fifty dollars, fifty three, one to Robinson Construction. Then they're acknowledged, fifty two. That's this week's blank P.O.
Make a motion to approve. I'll second it.
Art McLaren.
Yes.
Larry Watson.
Yes.
Billy Cloud.
Yes.
Item number eight, discussed and considered leaders life insurance, term life, one hundred life policy. That was the gentleman at Buckville last week about offering this to our employees and what he thought.
I don't see anything wrong with it.
He asked to pitch it to them, I'm good with it. Make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Art McLaren.
Yes.
Larry Watson.
Yes.
Billy Cloud.
Yes.
Item number nine, review and sign of appropriate bunch of reports to the court clerk.
Make a motion to approve. I'll second it.
Clark McLaren.
Yes.
Larry Watson.
Yes.
Billy Cloud.
Yes.
Moving on to item ten, review and sign of appropriate report, records and management and preservation of the report.
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Clark McLaren.
Yes.
Larry Watson. Billy Cloud.
Yes.
Okay, moving on to item eleven, review and sign of appropriate declaration for a book of kind of different quantity, um, two sixty-six oh five job gear tractor with diamond side boom.
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Art McLaren.
Yes.
Larry Watson.
Yes.
Billy Cloud.
Yes.
Is that correct? I'm doing it. No, we've got to have a pen and paper. We've got to get these things back in there for years. You don't have a train. Like that, if it hadn't dropped in less than, it's less than four years, there was some kind of perccality. I do three different things every day. I pack them trees in. And they all three done a good job. Who do you have going on? I'll, I'll take one. It's nicely consulted, uh, Paul W. and RB. And they're all real close and precise. I just have to bring it in. Randy, you got it just a minute.
Yeah.
It was in here. It didn't bounce.
No, there was a, it was, there was a check that was returned from the bank for a month because Michelle wrote it for too much and it was a, a slip so that they did not pay it. I don't know, last week she said it was because of this check is why it's out of balance. This is the sheriff's commissary, that's where they put money into.
If you'll look, it shows the check in the negative that's listed up above. The computer has no way to factor a negative. So if you do the math, I had to adjust that one by hand where they had bounced the check. And so that's why. It's, it's factoring that twenty-three thousand as a positive number because the computer can't distinguish it as a negative number, so it was trying to say they had seventeen thousand. They don't, that's a negative.
Did we put it into the computer?
Yes, that's why it's printed up there. You'll see the check listed. And there's also a copy of the negative miscellaneous receipt there with that appropriation. All the backups are there.
But the check didn't pay it, got returned, correct, and taken back out of the account.
It was actually twice. They wrote the check off of their depository account, deposited it into their general account. So the check returned off of their depository account and that got taken back. But they had already gotten the money moved to their general account, which did pay because the general account is actually one big account. So then I had to negatively miscellaneous receive them, which takes it from their fund to actually take the money back from them, from both sides.
When you say they, you're talking about.
The sheriffs. The sheriff. This was the sheriff's office. Yes, they bounced the check. They literally didn't have the money, but they had made a clerical error and thought they did.
So are you square with? Michelle's sick, I can't get a hold of her, I'm just sending her tags. But I didn't know that she had wrote them out, so Randy knows more about, about it than I do.
Hello. I'm no, I'm not gonna, for me, I'm not gonna sign it until we find out a little more about it.
I don't blame you.
Yeah, I don't want to.
But what I understood was that, and I could be, I could have misunderstood it, that Michelle got a number from somebody and she wrote the check, the check for that amount. But that, there was two, there was not that much money in the account to cover it. So I was under the impression that the bank returned it unpaid and they like voided it completely and then she reissued the check for the correct amount. Is that not, that, is that not what happened? Not exactly, no, because, I mean, once it was appropriated, this is several months ago. Once she wrote that a check and then she got appropriated for that money, we just whited it out on the appropriations and I didn't give them the twenty-something thousand. That's the one that went through the meeting and everybody signed it. And that took care of their appropriated money from their depository account. But what she then had turned around and done is took that same voucher that she had wrote out of her depository and she deposited it into the general. So that money has to be taken from both accounts because that money didn't exist. It was a number she'd gotten from Tiger. I have all of the paperwork. It was sent through when y'all originally signed those appropriations. I believe it was done in August or September. And so this is just the follow-up to finalize taking it from the general.
If I'm not mistaken, Michelle told me that when she wrote it, saying that the funds had not been appropriated to that account. For whatever reason.
Because they weren't there.
Because they weren't there. And this is, so it just has to show up, if you'll add up the numbers, what they're actually getting appropriated on is only their actual deposits. That's why it says out of balance.
So when Tiger?
Yes.
So it was twenty, if I remember correctly, it was like twenty-three thousand something other and then it was twenty-something thousand or something other. I can't remember the dollar it was. Was that appropriated again?
No.
The other amount?
It was never appropriated.
It was never appropriated. We just took it off the appropriations sheet.
So if it was never appropriated, why were we needing to do this one?
It's not being appropriated there. It is a miscellaneous receipt to equal up that, their account. That miscellaneous receipt was never sent through. We didn't send it through on that because this was all a big thing, had to get with the auditors on how actually to correct this problem because it went through both accounts. And what we had done, only corrected it in one account, the official depository, not the general. So the ge, on the general side, they were still getting credit for a twenty-something thousand dollar deposit that they actually never really had. Because the general's deposit did not bounce because there was enough money in that account.
When will Michelle do that?
Hopefully tomorrow.
I'm not that anybody's word or anything else. I mean, we just like to hear.
I, yeah, I thought, I thought that whole thing had been cleared up a long time ago.
So since we're talking about balancing here, have y'all balanced together?
Not the way that we balanced with the former administration, no.
So when's the last time you balanced?
To my knowledge, in June. Because like at the end of the month, after everything was done, Gail would call and say, okay, we're balanced. Or she said, we're off this amount, or there might have been a couple of things that were done wrong. So I went in, corrected them, and then she would call back and say, okay, now everything's the same, or everything's fine, everything is right.
Um, and how are you saying that, has it? I called you in July, you had some problems, the ones with the DA. I sent you over the paperwork for you to correct them and you didn't get them corrected. Then I called you again when we got finally in August and said everything was, except for the DA stuff, and I sent you an email and sent it back to you. And then in September, we were the same. And then in October, I sent you all your packets and said, you're still not correct on the DA side. That's the same thing. Other than that, we balance. But I've let you know, all of the accounts that you've had the wrong amounts and I've sent you over transfer slips, I've emailed it to you, so I have a paper trail. What exactly are you looking for from me?
What are, are you, they're talking about the DA stuff?
That is what you need to balance. Those are the accounts you need to correct so that we balance. Everything else, it will be in your email that we balance on. But yes, you have to correct the DA's accounts and then we will balance.
They're corrected.
Okay, well, I mean, you haven't sent that back to me. You're, you're sitting here saying that I haven't balanced with you and that's incorrect.
I said that we were, did not balance the way it was done in the former administration. So I'm.
How, you said she just calls you and tells you you're balanced. How is this not how you did it in the former administration? When I let you know and I send you everything by email and I send you actual, the actual paperwork of what you need to do.
Okay.
And where we, where do we go from here now? So y'all don't have anything together of the clerk's number, the treasurer's number to say as of July, August, September, October, we're balanced? We come to the same figure other than email or anything? I'm asking.
Yes, I send over, when I send over the end of the month and the SA and I's, that is every balance for every account and everything, the bank statements, everything. They are supposed to look at that the same and compare it to their, they print their report the same as I print mine. And then you look at it, you can compare them. I don't have CalPro, so I can't print her reports and look at them. That's, that's their office.
So I guess my question is, irregardless of between the two, how you do this, I'm saying y'all need to come together and say, one time a month, when you get yours, you get yours, we balance. We come together, both have the initial off sign, whatever, instead of I gave you this or that, or both of you get together and I'm still showing you hadn't got this. You know, the DA, know it here is fixed, instead of this back and forth between the two, I mean, people for the good of all, everybody's in the same team, there it's boom, yeah.
That's what they've been trying to do, but.
Apparently not.
Well, no one has came to my office and said, oh, I need this, or, oh, I don't have this. No one has come to my office and requested anything of me. But then we want to come here and say, oh, this wasn't done. No one's answered. So no, that's not coming together.
Wouldn't it be better if, instead of emailing and you're only a few feet from each other or yards, whatever it is, sit down, if you don't balance, sit down and talk, say where, where we're at?
The systems upload. It's not like, you know, sometimes it's like a large file. So then it only, it uploads back and forth, so like my TM uploads to her CalPro and vice versa. That's how we get the information. But as far as like the DA, that is information that the DA's office sent over to my office and her office stating that they had problems with their account. And all of the places they had problems and the times that they had met with them to get them to correct their account. So.
So are you saying you've got your, the DA straightened out?
It is, it is corrected, yes.
As of when?
Last Monday. I'm sorry, I think it was Tuesday.
Um, okay, because I received an email from Jerry on Thursday that her accounts were still not correct.
Then I have no idea what she's talking about. I did not receive anything from Jerry. And the email was not, it was not presented to our office that it was not correct. Since she got the email, I didn't know anything about it.
That's kind of what, what, what we're saying, we need to sit down across from each other and say, hey, this is right, this is wrong, what have you. Uh, we said, send emails out. Hopefully they get them, maybe they don't, you know?
And we don't need to worry about what they done in the last administration. This is a new administration. You don't have to work to get together on what you're doing together. Because they're, they're not here no more.
So at one time a month, when, when you get that at the end of the month, can the clerk and the treasurer get down and both agree that you're balanced at that point in time? And had a certain day of the month?
I think it'll have to be after the appropriations are assigned and approved because I can't balance with that monthly report, if the appropriations, even though Holly has the money in the fund, if it has not been appropriated on my side, I cannot balance to that number. It's not ever going to be correct because the money has not been appropriated yet.
She can certify if it's not appropriated.
Like her monthly report that she's saying that she prints off is never going to be the same as my monthly report because she has the money on her side, but it has not been appropriated to my side yet.
Okay. So when, is there some time during the month, date or end of the month, that you will, we will have all the appropriations?
After the Excess Board signs them, I put them in the computer after that. After both commissioners and Excess Board members have signed them, I cannot appropriate the money until both signatures are on those appropriations.
Like our next meeting is December the eleventh, thirteenth, didn't it?
October, so.
Yeah. Now, we will sign the appropriations then.
For November.
For November, right. And then at that time, you two should balance. Hopefully. Could you sit down sometime?
Well, I mean, she's taking in receipts every day, so I don't, I don't know, I don't know how that, I don't know how to get that to work. Because when she prints her monthly reports, all of tho, that money has been to the fund, but the sub-accounts will not be, reflect that until after both Excess Board and Commissioners have a, signed for the appropriations for the money to be appropriated to the different sub-account.
And this is authorized, what we're doing is authorizing the transfer of the mon.
Even though she.
Just to the sub-accounts, just to the sub-accounts. The transfer of the money to the subs.
But one fund could have twenty sub-accounts in it.
Yeah.
Oh, I, yeah.
So the way it was done in the past and the way it is still being done, when she sends over her end-of-month stuff and she sends over the last payroll and all the reports of, she usually sends over her outstanding vouchers, um, and then all of the transfer comes in. I enter all of that before I do my SA and I, and then I add mine up and the computer says, you're balanced. And that's how you print an SA and I, and that's what I send to the auditors every month. And that's when I let them know, okay, it's good except for whatever issue she may have. That is the way it's always been done? That's the way it is still being done. And I let her know, we've had the issue with the DA account, that's the one that has been off. That is how it works. And that's the same, because yes, other than that, I am continuously, every day, they are bringing receipts and deposits. So my number is never going to be the same as her number after that. Once she puts in these appropriations, her number will be what my number was twenty days before. That's why when I get her outstanding vouchers, I can balance. The same that it always was.
And all it is, you need to, you need to get it corrected.
Yeah, on, on this, it was just, um, the DA had money appropriated to the wrong sub-accounts. So then, when I had sent the transfers through, I don't think they had caught up on the clerk's end, the clerk hadn't put them in yet, the part that she needed, hers was a different amount than what mine was, that needed to move. And so that was the only issue.
So while we're on the subject of balancing and audit one thing or other, are we still paying this TM or the long-necker woman or whatever?
Um, no, I mean, if we have an issue that I need help with, I would contract her, but as far as on a monthly basis, no, she hasn't, she didn't have to come any in October. I think she helped with the September closings. That was it.
Okay, so. So repetitive in nature, what is she having to help you with, Holly?
She wasn't. She was trying to finalize the old accounts and trying to get them brought up. There was a lot of accounts that were not correct from the previous administration. That's why there's been so many of these transfers. That's one of the, the problem with the DA account is from issues from February, March, and I believe April of the year, that the money was never put in the correct accounts in the first place. And so it's a rolling thing that every month you've got to move it, you've got to have stuff in transit. And so that's been the biggest issue.
Okay, have we agreed to sit down and meet at the, at the appropriations that have been signed so we can get this balanced? I didn't hear anybody speak up.
No, I'm fine with that. Yeah.
Are you?
And I think a lot of that was due to the fact that a lot of the stuff that's missing into the treasure when it come in.
Yes, there's no.
There was no records.
There's no records to go back and look and say, oh, this is how this was being done, this is how that's being done. Nothing exists.
Well, I, I think that is all in the past. So what we need to do is get it balanced and we go from here. We're going to be talking about this a year from now, flung it on somebody else, when, but we just need to work right now and get it balanced and go on with it.
I didn't think any of that came out, anything missing was in.
Uh, actually, yes, there is in the exit audit, that there is a financial discrepancy over fifty dollars and then there is missing inventory. Those are the three, the two things listed actually in the exit audit. It's financial discrepancies and missing inventory.
Well, I mean, fifty dollars that was in the audit, I saw the same thing too. Of June the twenty-eighth, two days before the end of it. I mean, I understand, and then you've got that taken care of now, I'm assuming.
Yes, but it had to be carried, you have to carry that in transit for so many months. Yes, because you can't just write money off. You can't just say, oh, well, fifty dollars was missing. No, and it never, so I had to give it, you have to give them so many months for that money to show up and it never did. So then every month you were having to make, and so you'll find that reflected on the SA and I at the bottom, on all the notes. If you want to come by and get one of those so you can look at those, I don't know if y'all, do y'all come by and look at them?
No, but I would come by and get the bank statements also.
Okay, just let me know because they said they'll have to be redacted. And I'll have the girls get one, I'll get them set ready.
Yeah, just get them set ready.
Okay.
Probably all three of us need a copy if you got time.
Okay, yeah, no problem.
When do you want to have, from the time you took over till today or?
Um, yeah, that'll.
Till the latest one.
Okay.
July first.
You want to send this one to Michelle, come here.
Okay.
Sorry.
Shoot me a tape.
Okay, all right, yeah, I'll have them. Okay, I'll start working on it.
Manage yourselves regularly.
Okay.
Will we have an action on the thirteenth, do we? No action made on the thirteenth, buddy. I don't know, fourteenth is John.
Make motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Hart McClary?
Yes.
Larry Watson?
Yes.
Billy Cloud?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn.
I'll second it.
Joe Clement?
Yes.
Jerry Terrell?
Yes.